I got off Facebook over a year ago, so.
Well, as you read something the other day.
I made it like that.
All the information in the world is in our paper just.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah.
I will do that.
So it's just a good time.
Yeah.
See, I was afraid nobody would run. You know. And now I've heard that libertarians, there's somebody gonna be running in your life. Or they're. Jerry's Ward, Ewing's Ward. The guy from Knightstown Libertarian.
So do you know the other?
No. But I do know that they're bringing them out, but I also heard that they're trying to get at Republicans.
Last Thursday's when it was.
It's all year long with your car.
Cars don't.
Did you at least keep the gear?
Good, good.
I would have no idea that kind of.
I think we had, but he got lost in Popple.
Oh, well. At least you didn't drown, balls in your door. Oh, of course. I'll get him back.
She's laughing with you about it.
You forget, I'm the one that signs the claims for down there.
If you want pay.
If you want pay, I'd like to get back.
Yeah, we're good. You're good.
Get the road better control.
That's right. That's, see tomorrow with our other.
They've not come around us from having a thinking about how to waste water, because every time they have a problem, they go and kills us.
Right. I know that they just like the wastewater fax machine. Maybe you will, I don't know.
The fax in the road most of the time.
When she told me, I'm like, you're working on your what? What is that? Okay.
Right next to the.
Yeah.
Hey, Dan.
Do you see my answer to your email?
I think I just did his second training.
Or do you have some?
Yeah, tell her to come to one of our stations. I think they have it. Is she eighteen? I don't know. You know my Bergen? Talk to him. He got. Well, does she have her certification? She has to be certified. Red Cross or the Williams. Yeah, talk to Mike about it.
Well, it's hard enough to do that way.
I know Kylie, Kylie Mead Dunn.
She was still a private.
So. But I do know they have.
So my daughter just started in the academy.
Where's she working at?
She's traveling, so she's been doing the middle school. What's her name?
She comes with me.
I know she does too, but she wants to see friendly.
Friendly came today, she was a kid.
Yeah.
She is.
She is brought to me.
She, you guys like this. She's got this little hat. And she hands me her check and she goes. I put the money on her car. Cheating by snacks today.
Oh, my goodness. She looks just, just looks just like you.
Thanks.
That's it. Dutyful.
Shut that motor back.
This is just not the time for me. You know that. Nathan, he gets, they're gonna shock him back in the rhythms. And then daddy, he's having some issues and it's just, you know, and to do this for I need. You know. With kids too many. This side of the family needs. And you know, he's worky notes and you know, just. It just seems like we've been saying. It's just a man, it's awful coming in that.
So you're off.
Okay, yeah. Hey, Mr. Dickens.
Yeah, fill into the letters, yeah. That's right.
I'm staying late, I'm not staying late. It's a good deal. Hi, thanks Cory. I think it feels, I think it's good.
So Rick will call you soon.
Yeah, he'll, he'll get it.
There's a reason.
Was there a thing that's called? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, I can't, I can't. Oh, yeah. The hose or what?
I can't imagine.
Guys, how are you?
No. And he would tell me on Facebook that they got somebody running for three council seats. A while. I asked, I meet him, she went down. I thought that was kind of weird. I think they're mad because they wanted me to be the secretary of. And when I quit, I don't get anything.
Yeah.
Nothing yet. It looked like a clean flight tonight.
Yeah, I don't know.
Lynn is not gonna, he's way on business. At least he was for. How are you?
Business, business, first.
That's what the text said. Throw under ice.
Adelitus to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just ask you to be with us tonight as we conduct the business of the city of Newcastle. We ask you give us wisdom and patience, just help us to make good decisions. Or I pray that you'll bless our city and prosper it, and I pray you'll protect all of our citizens in Jesus' name.
City Council meeting Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen comes to order. Roll call please.
Mary Brinkton.
Here.
Jeff Hancock.
Here.
Jared Wald.
Here.
Aaron Dickens.
Here.
Mark Coger.
Here.
Lynn Perdue. Rex Beckenbauer.
Here.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes from the formal meeting?
Move that way, except minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call vote.
Mary Brinkton.
Aye.
Jeff Hancock.
Aye.
Jared Wald.
Aye.
Aaron Dickens.
Aye.
Mark Coger.
Aye.
Rex Beckenbauer.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Ms. Brede, I turn this meeting over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing on the agenda tonight, but Cory, would you like to introduce?
Well, he's not here yet. He's, he's in transit.
Okay.
So if you have other things to do.
We, we could do that, sure.
All right, thanks.
Be glad to. Thanks, Cory. I'll turn the floor to Councilwoman Brunt.
Okay, I just have a couple of things tonight. I had a man call me that lives over on Plum Street and he's getting really upset about the semis using Plum Street and Walnut Street instead of using the truck route. He claims it's tearing up the roads over there really bad. So I told him I'd mention it tonight and maybe the police could, you know, I don't know, he didn't.
Was he talking about the twenty-fifth down the Grady?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll start with force, taking some enforcement action down there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Also, I went over and it was interesting that this is on Cory's brochure, because I went out at the Beacon site just to see if there was any activity at that factory. And believe it or not, there is. I even got out of the car, looked inside and it looked like they're moving like machinery and stuff in. They cleaned the parking lot, it looks really good. So at least we know that, you know, there is activity and they are going to do something finally. So anyway, that's all I have tonight.
The only thing I have, Matt, could I see you after the meeting? That's all, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
I don't have anything important. I can tell a story.
I can only do so much.
I.
I can kind of lead into it too.
You, you got Rex though, so you got thirty minutes. The filibuster. Since he's retired, he's, he's got it.
I'd like to read the hundred nineteenth chapter of Psalms.
Well, did you have anything, Mark?
I don't, no, thank you.
The only two things I've got, I'd like to see possibly next meeting, if we could have an ordinance on creating that non-reverting fund in those buildings up town.
We got about, in fact, I think Brenda's office is getting the ordinances. There's about five existing non-reverting funds. They're, I think they're all zero balances. One is downtown, one is beautification. I mean, they're just different. We should probably look at those. If one of those works, if you look at the ordinance and say, well, that works, we can just use that. If not, we maybe should think about getting rid of some of those and we could all do that in one ordinance. But I think.
They are all zero balances.
Yeah, Brenda, I gave her the numbers.
If you can send me those numbers all again.
Okay.
Is there any reason to keep those separate? Like, I mean, I would think that.
Well, what you have to do with a non-reverting fund.
Is be a specific.
Is specify what they're going to be used for. So you can't make it too broad, or the State Board of Accounts is going to be upset about that. So you have to kind of gear it to what it's for.
Right.
Then the other thing I'd like possibly see us look at a complete streets ordinance, one of the ones we've.
I got that.
Yeah, for next meeting. And also I wanted to give some credit to the street department. I think you guys have been doing a bang-up job this winter. I thought Monday was, I thought there was more sand and salt that I've seen in years. I mean, used in the right way, not just dumped somewhere, but, you know, so I just wanted to give you some credit for that.
I appreciate that.
And that's all I got for you.
That was her day off, too.
Yeah.
Well, let's, before you go to yours, Cory, do you have any brief with your?
Yeah, brief.
I hate to, I'd be glad to wait for however long the mark's gonna be.
So, at your station is a newsletter that our office put together. And as you know, our organization is a not-for-profit and we're a public-private organization. So we receive investment from the city and so thank you for your continued support. The county invests, the town of Spice Island invests, and then the rest of our, our resources come from the private sector and individuals. So each year we put together a request to send to those folks and we try to give them an update on our activities. And so that's what this newsletter represents, is a, is a kind of a snapshot, a summary of the past year.
And Cory will fly through it, but if you open the front page, the top left-hand corner, Cory received an award of forty under forty, and he would never mention himself, but he's worked hard to get that. Although it does say talented and young and they weren't very picky on some of the words, but, but congratulations Cory, it was well deserved.
They were, they were picky enough that it's forty under forty, not forty, forty and under. So we at least know.
I think they felt sorry for me because that equipped my age and I'm really close.
That's better than six feet in.
Appreciate it, Mayor. So you can see the activity here at Beacon Industries, Mary, thank you for mentioning that. Their, their CEO had a couple telephone conversations with them early in the year, which indicated to me that they were, they were moving forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions in regards to what's in the newsletter. In terms of activity in January, from a business attraction standpoint, we submitted five RFI's, requests for information, four of which the Shell building was submitted. If we did not have the Shell building or something like that, we would not be able to put our name in the hat. And then the other property that matched was the his and our site, which is out on Three Hundred South, the hundred and forty-three acres. Were, our office is supporting John Montgomery and in his efforts to secure a franchise with the Radisson Group. Country Inn Suites. A little history there. We did a market analysis for a hotel back in twenty fourteen and, you know, basically said. We set it up to do a market analysis in two phases. And we got through the first phase and our consultant, who specializes in hospitality, research and the hospitality industry. He said, Cory, I'd be happy to take your money for the second phase, but I don't think we need to go any farther. In other words, the market wasn't very good at that point in time. So we waited and, you know, a lot of things have happened since then and so we redid the market analysis in, in late fifteen, early sixteen, and it was a different story. And so we've supplied that to John and his, his efforts to secure a franchise agreement. And we've also used that same market study to attract the other potential investors for a hotel. We view a hotel, and I'm sort of location agnostic, in other words, I really don't care where. It's got to make sense for the, for the person making the investment. But it really became clear in the Boars Head attraction that a national brand was important. A property where you could go online and make reservations. A property where you would get some kind of loyalty points. A property that has an indoor pool. A property that offers a continental breakfast. A property that offers business amenities. And so I'm, I'm pleased that he's, we're, we're headed into baseball season, right? So I mean, we're in the, we're in the late innings, he's in the late innings on negotiations. You know, he has said publicly that it's not a done deal, but he's very, very close. And so hopefully we'll have that amenity for the county. It'll, it'll benefit both the businesses and the tourists. That's not Jeff. Would you like to be Jeff for a minute? We're also working on an expansion project and hopefully be able to share some news here in a few weeks with everyone. We're, we're still developing the scope of the project, but so in terms of two thousand nineteen, things are brisk. As I mentioned here earlier, when I came, you know, two things, workforce and quality of place, that's kind of the two, two trends. And I still see both of those. And I can't say enough about our, our Career Center and in terms of building that pipeline. And Crown Equipment was the guest speaker at the last EDC board meeting on Thursday. And there was a, there was an article in Sunday's Courier-Times. And as you may know, Crown has a really good relationship with the Career Center. And I tell other companies about that relationship, because the Career Center's looking to build relationships with the business community. And that could be a pipeline to future talent. So we're so blessed to have that opportunity here. And I think we need to continue to support that and build upon that. In terms of quality of place, you know, you all recently gave some funds to the Newcastle Main Street. And I think that was a good move and appreciate your support because Kerry and the team, but mainly Kerry, are building a lot of synergy in downtown Newcastle. and appreciate your support because Kerry and the team, but mainly Kerry, are building a lot of synergy in downtown Newcastle, and with the fourteen-hundred Plaza coming online, I think you're going to see some nice positive domino effect in terms of quality of place. So, appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions you may have, stuff that I didn't cover in my ramblings, if you ask me to continue, I'm probably going to sing, quickly asking to stop.
Hey, Corey, I had a question, how are, are you marketing the old Marsh site?
We have the Marsh site on our, what we call our property database, and we've submitted the Marsh site a few times. In terms of a site for a grocery store.
Start singing.
I don't know, I don't know the song. I'm too young. It says I'm under forty, right? My own personal opinion, in terms of using it for its former use, in other words, putting another grocery store in there, I think that's tough. That's my own personal opinion.
It's just that side of town.
Grocery business, so I'm happy to be told that I'm wrong, but if you look at the other stores that we have in our community and the location, I, I think that's tough.
Well, we've had other groceries looked at, one mile south, turn, one turn right, and you're in, a little more mile, you're in Walmart's front door, so for another grocery store to look at that demographic.
I know, but it's just that whole area, there needs to be something there, it's, you know, everything's in there.
We have submitted, we have submitted it for a data center a few times, now, no one has.
Like a call center or something, not a call center?
Not a call, well, we have submitted it for a call center, but when I say data center, I mean something different, we have submitted for a call center, but most recently, we've sent it, we've submitted it for a data center, basically, computer infrastructure to store data, so I don't know, if you, if you use Dropbox or use, you know, store stuff in the cloud, you know, equipment could be placed really anywhere. The challenge with that is not with the site, not with our community, Indiana's not very competitive from a taxation standpoint on, for data centers. So, we are, it is on our radar.
We're about fifteen minutes out, getting, getting recess or getting dancin' or.
I can't dance in fifteen minutes.
If, if that's all, Kerry, you got anything for Main Street, I'm not putting you on the spot, but.
Uh, no, we just, we took some of the money that you guys gave us, and we just come up with a marketing plan, that was our first thing, we got a new logo and a new website coming April first, and we signed a contract with New Lisbon to get Wi-Fi here by April first.
Awesome, that's great. For downtown, from Eleventh Street to Fifteenth Street.
From Fleming to Race, essentially, yeah.
It's amazing the selling point on that, but that's, it's really big. Want to open up to the public and go ahead and have, or Chiefs or whatever, you go ahead.
Anything, Chief?
No, I do not.
Chief?
No.
It's not your.
No. And Counselor?
What do you usually talk?
Yeah? Brenda?
Hannah?
It's still night.
Ed? Greg? Anything, Lee?
No.
No? I guess we'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public like to come forward, come ahead.
I'm bouncing down the side of One Hoppwood Road, I do have a question, Eleventh Street on the east side, this is stores have been a no parking zone, between Bundy and Mauer, there's no signs to indicate it's no parking, and three days this week, in the last seven days, there's been two cars parked in the corner of Mauer and Eleventh on the east side, I'm just concerned because it's a busy street, there's school buses that go up and down there, and I don't know if more signage might help.
Sure. Valerie, I had a call on that today from another, and that's what, Matt, that's what I'm going to talk to you about, so.
Yeah, I would appreciate it, I mean, it's very, very busy.
Thank you for bringing it up, but.
On Eleventh, between Bundy and Mauer.
We can just have Lee put a couple up.
There's not one sign on the east side.
Just have Lee put a couple up.
Yeah.
The two cars that were parked there, Mayor, you could visually see the sign in the next block, but apparently that's not close enough, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any down there?
Yeah, we've got.
Couple, a couple, but.
Any other citizens who wish you could come?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I might say one thing, in the political arena, the primary election has been called off, we will not have a primary this year, so it'll be in November.
Thank you, good.
Well, let's just take a, a ten-minute, fifteen-minute recess, if anybody would like to stay, Jeff's on his way, and I think most of us want to hear him, if, if your department heads want to leave and things, Mayor, it's up to you, but, I mean, I think the council would like to, we're not going to decide anything or vote on anything tonight, I don't think.
Motion for recess, so we'll take a ten, fifteen-minute recess, if we're prepared to leave if you want.
Oh, no, 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 that happens. Oh, well. And no prob, no. I don't, right. It's no problem.
I mean, that's what we're doing, like, like Christmas.
I didn't like.
I know, I'm actually, Marla's helping me, she's like, depends on which side.
Yeah.
The habit of just wanting to get a sign, like, put like a lighted sign.
I think it'll be good.
And he wanted me to write a print ticket for it, and I said, well, I don't know if that's currently an offer or a offer, but I was probably about that.
I did.
Like the vinyl.
I paid, I was, I was.
But you never know now.
Well, that's true.
That's a boundless. They have to be so telling.
Well, he did say that that's all, that it turns away, that they have wanted to put a banner.
But I think they're, I don't know, but I think they should, yeah. So there's another location.
Yeah, I'll think about that, do you have, do you just think?
I just thought, you know, really, because when you look at that, there's nothing.
Right, between East Raglan and downtown. And the fireman was not answering. About Robert and Deanna's. I mean, I thought it might, I thought it was. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I thought anyone who got something, it would generate. Yeah, I might learn some stuff on the way. I know stuff is going on. I have a board meeting at one, but other than that. I'll just be up here Friday morning, and then whenever you're ready, I will be ready.
I think you will.
Yes, I am.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, she is yours.
Who'd you think fans had this for about?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
She pays for nine.
You know, they do, must say, must say. But you know, yeah, but there's, there would be, it's quite a lot, there's quite a lot of money goes out for employees, because we can probably ten people, ten, eleven people. Now, they, they get, they get election day off, you know, I saw, I saw in, somewhere on the, in the news, there's some cities, and I don't know, I don't know if we can do it in Indiana, there's some cities that mandate every business has to go off, yes, it's a day off. Holiday.
They probably still have to get off.
Thanks. No, Chris. She's not married yet. She is.
Yeah, Obama, that's exactly right.
Thanks, and she goes, you two sit down now. Yeah, yeah. You two sit down now. No, she's already just.
I mean, it was, it was not.
Yeah, sure.
It was measured, specified, there's no way.
Well, you go, you go, you find it back. Six thousand and some dollars, and we had a tax break. Every day is almost on a. Is that real? So, anyway. That's right. Mary's love wants me to do it. Yeah, that's it, you're already getting. Farbe in. I know, he does everything, he's the half.
And we just got to see. Come on, for their own.
Seriously.
He makes the best.
I've been there, and she wakes up, she's a wrecker.
All see the opportunity, all those. See opportunities, the rest of the city.
Oh, yeah, I gotta go.
You're not that, you're not, you don't say.
That's true. You've got.
We, we have members. Been a national campaign, so. Haven't been with us, probably.
Right, get a new travel. Well, I hope you have a few more minutes, I think if we get to show up, then we should. Yeah, he's, he's everybody. Wizard of Oz or what? See, that's what's dangerous about being a neighbor. I can't, I have. Here he is, let's go.
All for you, all for you.
We'll get started again here. Jane, did I cut you short, did I, did you want to, did you have an announcement?
No, I'm just representing the leaders of this order, since we're gonna start my meeting.
Okay. And there's a meeting coming up?
Yes.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
At the library.
At the library.
I mean, next Tuesday.
Your meeting.
Oh, yes.
Now, I don't want to tell people that she's a schoolteacher, an educator.
And a fine one, she was a fine one.
She is a really good educator.
Very, very positive. But yes, your group has a meeting Tuesday at the library.
Right, it's at, it's at seven, eight thirty, and Dr. Jennifer McCormick, who graduated from Newcastle, she's one of our own. Uh, she's gonna be speaking about. We're trying to go to different things than by people.
Okay.
And we've had several things in the paper, too.
Well, and actually, on that note. Senate Bill one oh five is up for a third vote, which has to do with three districting.
Right.
So. Call your senator.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll repeat this meeting. Jerry, you wanna?
Well, I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, you sent me, uh, as a representative of this, of the city over to the Indiana Eastern. Eastern Indiana Regional Plan Commission luncheon, and it was a really good meeting. I don't know if it was my good looks and my compassionate heart, or just being from Newcastle and Henry County. But they, uh, seriously, it was amazing, all that was discussed on that day. It's not a group that I saw in that two hours that sits back and waits for things to come. I think they were pretty aggressive, as Jeff was out on the road today at the State House, and then went up to Lafayette, and hopefully he'll have some things to say about that. I asked them to come, and they have three heavy, heavy hitters here this evening. And I also asked Corey if, if he wouldn't mind saying some things like everyone asked, so. Corey, you wanna start out? You want Jeff to start out?
That's okay, I'm gonna have him start out.
And I, uh, I recognize the heavy hitter comment, but I joined the gym this week. I'm working on that, I'm working on that, thanks. So, thanks, Jerry. I don't know where, where you want us to begin, I don't know how much you know about, uh, about what our group has been doing. Most of you probably have some recollection of a previous group called, uh, the Eastern Indiana Development District that was actually located here in Newcastle, uh, five or six years ago. It dissolved. A group of folks continued work, uh, one from each of the six counties that, uh, that had made up that group, and, uh, Ed Yanos actually worked with us on, uh, on that group as we talked about putting together a new organization. One of the significant challenges, uh, that I felt, uh, that that organization had was that, uh, many times it operated in conflict, uh, with the local economic development corporations. And so, each of the six counties that were in that, uh, group at the time had their own economic development office, uh, and that organization, uh, actually was staffed by people, I think, who, who maybe some of them aspired to be economic development folks, and, and, uh, so as we put together a new organization, uh, the very first thing that we decided, uh, as a group was that this organization was not gonna be in conflict, uh, with our local economic development offices. We were going to try to do things that supported their operations, uh, and complemented what they were trying to do. So, we have moved in that direction. We actually, uh, incorporated and started as a group, uh, we formed this organization under Indiana Code. Thirty-six dash seven dash seven allows for the formation of, uh, two or more counties to join together and form a regional planning commission. I think that, uh, that title sometimes confuses people because they, they think, well, we've already got, we've got a planning commission, uh, that, that does our zoning and those kind of things. That's not what we do. We work together on planning for the region, uh, and we are an organization that's recognized, uh, by the Economic Development Administration at the federal level, uh, by Rural Development, uh, as part of the Department of Agriculture, uh, as a planning organization, and our plan qualifies our members to apply for certain grant opportunities at the federal level. We're engaged in, uh, regional economic development planning, not, uh, not marketing, but planning. And as such, we have developed a, a regional economic development plan, uh, that the Department of Agriculture calls a, a SET Plan, S-E-T, Stronger Economies Together. And that plan has been approved by the Department of Agriculture, uh, through twenty twenty-two as our, uh, regional plan. A few of the things that, that we've been doing, I'll just tell you about today, uh, because we have been working on a, uh, regional housing study, uh, in collaboration with the Purdue Center for Regional Development, uh, we completed that study. Steve Higginbotham, uh, from Wayne County is chairing a committee that, uh, that is comprised of, uh, local planning directors, uh, whether they be, uh, at the county level or the, or the city level, uh, and in fact, the Henry County Planning Director with, with you on, on some of the, some of your initiatives. But one of the things, uh, the region believes, uh, we will need to address moving forward, uh, to allow for, uh, more single-family, uh, home construction in rural areas like ours, uh, is to have the potential for tax increment financing of those new houses as they're developed, uh, in order to help pay for some of the infrastructure that will be required to attract developers to the rural areas. You may have seen, uh, there's a, a study from Ball State just in the last, uh, couple of weeks that, uh, that points out that sixty-two counties in Indiana, uh, it is, um, is not feasible to build new, uh, speculative homes in the price range that our residents can afford, uh, and make a profit. And so, this bill that, uh, that State Senator Jeff Rodd carried for us, uh, got passed out of the committee today. It's Senate Bill five six six, and it was passed out of the Senate Committee by a twelve to one vote, uh, this morning, and will go to the, to the full Senate. If it's, if it's finally approved, it would allow counties and cities through their redevelopment commissions, uh, to develop a housing plan that would include the ability to, uh, capture tax, tax increment financing, uh, on the incremental increase in assessed value that would be used to pay off the costs of infrastructure that the city or the county has, uh, has had to put into that development to get the developer to, to build spec homes. So, we think that's, uh, that's a significant step in the right direction. Uh, we also, uh, went to Purdue today, to West Lafayette, where we have a partnership with the, the Purdue Center for, for Regional Development. They are, uh, working with us and working with their communications department at Purdue. The students in the communication department are looking at communities in our region, uh, and, and establishing what their online, uh, presence is, uh, and developing plans for us as we move forward to improve those online reputations. When people go to the internet and they, they Google Newcastle, what do they see, and, and how do we change for, uh, in a positive way, what it is they see when they, when they do those kind of searches? So, that is, has started this, uh, this semester. We're also working with them on, uh, a grant that they obtained for us that will, uh, be used to start robotics clubs in schools and probably elementary schools. We're still working through the, the final details, uh, but we'll be able to support, uh, those schools in, in purchasing the, uh, the robots and, and the equipment that they need to learn how to, uh, program those robots and then engage in competitions, uh, next, next school year. So, uh, we're, we're moving forward in, in that regard. I told you a little bit about, uh, about the plan that we developed. That plan includes, uh, a set of six goals. Those goals are to positively impact workforce development, healthcare, agriculture and agribusiness, quality of place, infrastructure, and collaboration among our membership. So, those goals are, are, uh, outlined in some detail on our website. The, uh, plan is available on our website, easternindianarpc.org. You're more than welcome, I encourage you to take a look at those. Jerry talked a little bit about, uh, about the board meeting in January, quarterly. Uh, we had Scott Rudd, who is the Director of Broadband Opportunities for the State of Indiana, who, uh, came and spoke to us. We are working with Scott and, and working collaboratively with, uh, all of the counties in the region. And we think we're, we want to move in the direction of, uh, of all of the counties becoming broadband certified, uh, through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And Mr. Rudd, then, who worked with us on, uh, on really touting that as the, the first region who is broadband certified and, and, uh, making sure that that is, is well known throughout, uh, throughout the state and through the IDPC. So, we've got a lot of initiatives, uh, going on. I think you know that, that we had similar conversations with, uh, with the Henry County Council and Commissioners. They, by a four to three vote, uh, not too long ago, decided not to join. And so, my understanding is at least part of that reason is, uh, financial.
Can the city join without the county?
Uh, you cannot, you cannot. The, the way the statute reads, the counties, uh, the county commissioners have that authority to, to determine membership, and then, uh, and then by virtue of the county being a member, all of the incorporated municipalities within the county are also members. But if the, the issue truly is, is financial, uh, it may be possible to work with them to, uh, help them on the financial end. And, uh, what we have established as dues for, uh, for our members is forty cents per resident, based on, going back to the, the time we organized. The most recent census date was two thousand fourteen. And we did talk to the county about, uh, uh, subtracting from that number the, uh, residents of, of the prison in, uh, in Henry County. So, uh, it works out to, to a little over, uh, eighteen thousand dollars annually, and that, uh, I think in terms of, of our currently five county, uh, members from Union County at the low end, with like seventy-two, seventy-three hundred in population, and then Wayne County on the upper end with sixty-seven thousand, uh, the dues range from, uh, twenty-five hundred to, to, uh, twenty-seven thousand.
Jeff, could you just let everyone know the counties that are involved with, with you this time?
Randolph, Wayne, Union, Fayette, and Rush.
Well, unfortunately, the finances is a situation for everybody. And you've heard the old cliche nickel and dime to death.
Absolutely.
Uh, a- and they've heard me complain about, it's not nickel and dime, it's eight thousand dollars here, ten thousand dollars here, and, and, uh, probably the, the bad taste in my mouth was the direction we were going up north, without mentioning any names. I still felt like we was getting any bang for our buck. Felt like a redheaded stepchild. I mean, I better.
You better refit it.
In other words. We were last on the totem, we were the, we, we were the, we were the totem pole, we were the one underneath the ground level, but, uh, just didn't feel like we were getting our.
Bang for our buck.
Money's worth. And, uh, so, you know, we have a council that, that instead of just voting it out, wanted to sit back and, and ask you to come in, and we want to know Corey's feelings on the participation, and if it's valuable to Corey. We, we just wanna look at it. So, uh, I, I probably have a lot to blame because of, I didn't feel like we were getting our money's worth elsewhere.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Greg, and I, I guess all I can tell you is, uh, my perspective of, of where we're at now, uh, is that we are a group that is truly working together. Last year, we spent a good bit of our energy on a, uh, a regional stellar application. We were finalists, we were not selected, but out of that, uh, I think grew a, a deeper commitment to each other and working together and working through, uh, challenges and, and common problems. And, and we now have, uh, from that, a regional development plan that, uh, uh, that is helpful with any Oprah CDBG application, uh, because there are bonus points awarded for being part of a regional plan. And so, in, we are now working to massage, uh, how we add projects to that plan, uh, and, and how we can best, uh, take advantage of those, those bonus point situations that, uh, that Oprah has available. So, uh, I think we're, we're working much, uh, more effectively together than the old organization did. How much you derive from it, in my opinion, is gonna be largely based on how much you put into it. You know, as we, as we engage in discussions and decide, uh, strategies and directions that we wanna take, uh, if a, a member county chooses for whatever reason to not participate in those discussions, then they won't get much benefit from it. So, as I've, as I've told Corey, uh, I think the position that the other five counties take is, uh, we know you guys, we know we, we have common challenges. Uh, there's a lot of things we can work together on, uh, and, and we would welcome your participation, but, uh, only if you really wanna be a part of the group. And so, I, I think it's important that you have these conversations, you talk through it, uh, what's, what's in it for us, how do we, how do we capitalize on this, how do we get that bang for our buck? Uh, and not only talk to us about it, but talk to the county about it, and how can, how can you and they work together, uh, to more effectively be a part of a regional organization, whether it's ours or, or some other. So, I did bring Ken Paus, but then, you know, uh, Ken is, he's the President of Wayne County Commissioners. He's also the Chairman of, uh, the Board of Directors for the region. Uh, and, uh, Ken, do you have a few things you'd like to say if you've got?
Sure.
You got time?
Sure.
Good.
We'd like to take a bunch of time to joke about this, you know. I wanted to say a few words this evening, uh, from a perspective. I wanted to say a few words this evening from a perspective of a council person. I served twenty years on the City Council in Richmond, Indiana. So I certainly can understand where you're coming from when you look at this and you look at planning. And Mayor, I've been where you're sitting before, well, I haven't been a mayor's duty, but sitting as President of the City Council and looking at where we were going to spend our monies as we looked at Muncie and some of the programs they had, and we were sending five, ten thousand dollars up there, really not getting the buck. And so one of the things in my early days on the City Council side was the fact that I always thought that, boy, you know, if I could get two or three cities together on the eastern side of Indiana, if we could work together, we'd be a lot stronger than just being just Richmond. Well, that sounds good, but doesn't work very well. You know, you have these basketball teams, football teams and everything like this. And so it's very difficult to do that. And I can tell you, I was a failure at that. I spent twenty years on city side trying to do that. And ran for mayor a couple of times, got defeated both times, but it didn't bother me. The sun comes up the next day and there's still work to do if you believe in your community. If you didn't believe in your community, you wouldn't be here this evening. So a good friend of mine that I'd served on City Council with passed away. And he was serving at that time on County Council. So I decided, well, why don't I learn what county government's all about? Can't be that much different from city government. Boy, was I wrong. And then, I've been on the county side now for twenty-six years. I'm still the city boy with a lot of my fellow council people. Jeff didn't tell you, Jeff is our Executive Director for the Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. He's also President of our County Council. It's been very nice to him because he holds the pocketbook. But at the same time, I'm kind of his boss on the Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. He's our full-time person at the end. But I get so excited about what we've been able to accomplish here with this new organization. Now think about it. We have five counties. Randolph, down to Wayne, Wayne down to Union County, from Union over to Fayette, and Fayette to Rush County, all working together. Jeff mentioned that they worked this last year on a stellar program, which we did. Now think about all five counties in, I'll just give you one day. We started up in Winchester, all working together, traveling around through all those counties, all the mayors, commissioners, working together for the stellar program. Have you ever seen anything like that happen before? It has not happened. Does Indianapolis know where we are over here on the east side of Indiana? Not really. We're trying awfully hard. You saw, well, you didn't see it today, but in our testimony today before the Tax and Finance Committee over there, we got a lot of support. We got a lot of support through our five counties that we have to be able to work on this residential TIF program on there. I can encourage you, council people here this evening, to really think about joining our organization. I want you to join it because it'll help make us even stronger yet. You work very well with Wayne County. You've got Rush County to your south end here. I know you've worked on round three before, trying to figure out how to make some changes on that. But as we work together, we're a stronger base. We lobby better at the State House for projects that we want to do. Can you folks here work with your county commissioners? Maybe you can split the cost on there together. If I put my county hat on, I served initially on the County Council, then went on to Commissioner. You had four brand-new people in the County Council that came in. Briefly, in talking to them, there were about a half million dollars in debt and something on there. Money was a real problem there. And so you have new people that don't know anything about us, what we do or anything else, that we wanted whatever their seventeen thousand dollars, whatever it was for them to do. Jeff made a presentation to them, but, you know, it's brand-new, their first meeting. They didn't even know how to run the meeting. It was a very interesting meeting. Anyway, they voted it down.
We are. It's okay.
To be a fact, Elijah, it was an interesting meeting. And he's from Wayne County, too. Very interesting. But I can understand why they turned the meeting down. But I think with adequate time for them to really find out where they are in their budget, what dollars they have available, what our group is all about, what their charge is as council people, what they have to do, that they're going to look at this group and say, we need to belong to this Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. It will benefit all of you. If you're going to apply for any federal funding, Jeff talked about some of it, you need to belong to one of these groups. You can't even apply. Now, the first thing you have to understand, you can't join us and tomorrow think, oh, I'm going to go out and get a billion-dollar grant. That's just not going to happen. And we're the first to tell you, and I like to say we're still in the kindergarten phase. We're just getting our feet wet and we're learning what we need to do on there. And so I would encourage you to do that. I'm going to pass out here some of the goals that Jeff talked to you about on the set plans and so on. So you don't have to write all that down here.
Could I have one more?
That will go through the goals that Jeff talked about. And that's just a little summary of some of what we have. There's a lot more than we've done. What I would say to you, the three of us here are available anytime for your cause. As you talk about this and you want to know more about it, I'm going to be bringing Steve up here. He's going to talk about our housing study that we've just completed. All of that fits in with what we did for the State House today. Also on this, getting the TIF for single-family dwellings on there. So that's all very important. And Steve, why don't you come on up? Because we've already involved the Henry County area in what we're working on.
What does the board consist of and who's the voting members on your board?
I will let our paid executive director because there's about, what, thirty-five on the board all total?
I mean, just briefly.
It's actually by statute, established by statute. Four of our five counties have a population of one hundred and fifty thousand. By statute, those four counties-
Can I get one more?
A Commissioner appointment, a County Council appointment, which must be a current County Council member. And then the five largest incorporated municipalities each have an appointment. If there are not five incorporated municipalities, the county commissioners appoint at-large positions to fill those. Each county has seven. Wayne County with a population of over fifty thousand actually has ten. The seven largest municipalities, so two additional municipality appointments. And then the county surveyor has an appointment. Don't ask me why. It's by statute. So-
Is it politically motivated? Is it, is it a Republican or a Democrat?
Doesn't have to be a certain number of Republicans.
Just as long as they're a member of the-
A certain number of Republicans.
A member of that county.
Correct. And the municipalities have to appoint someone who is, who resides in that municipality. The other stipulation is that the, there's a non-voting member who's appointed by the governor. That happens to be State Senator Roth. So that's, there are, I think, thirty-nine in our current five-county structure. If we go to six counties, we'd have seven more positions.
Thanks, Jeff.
And they're not all, they're not all currently filled. And if a municipality chooses not to fill their position, then we just have one fewer board member. So it's not where someone else can put that down.
Gotcha.
I'm not a politician, so I won't insult anybody here to speak as my two colleagues.
Will you insult us?
I am Steve Higginbotham, Director of Facilities- Director of Facilities and Development for Wayne County. I worked there for about thirty-one years. I was part of the original set process when we went through and established the goals and objectives for the region. And then out of that, as you read that pamphlet that's passed out before you, you've got the goals and objectives in general form that were established for the region. And then within that, if you go to the Herpsey website and you can see the report in its entirety. But then I was appointed to be the Chairman of the Housing Commission. What the Housing Study has done, was done by Purdue University. We wanted to determine why folks who lived in the region didn't live in the region. Why didn't they live here? Or those folks who did live here and they worked someplace else. So part of the Housing Study that was conducted was they polled the employers of the region, they polled the employees of the region, and then they polled the general populace of the region to come up with, and in the pamphlet that says the executive summary is the summary of the entire report, and it identified ten challenges that the region faced in attracting the employees to live in this region who work here. We want those folks to live here. Or why they chose to live here and work somewhere else. And so there's ten challenges in there that were identified, as well as ten strategies. And that was from the larger group, as each one of the communities had their individual group hearings. My committee then, I pulled together all the plan directors from the region to look to either validate or invalidate or substantiate these strategies and challenges. And then what can we do in each individual community that collectively would work for the region? And so we went through those challenges. And you'll see on challenge number nine, I think it is, broadband is one of. If you, when we asked the employee, the potential employee who did not live here, one of the amenities that they wanted was broadband. It rated right up there with a washer and dryer. And so that is why our next, one of our next immediate steps is to make the region broadband-ready, make it certified broadband-ready. Because it's an amenity that is important to those folks to relocate here. And then we looked at the strategies, and you'll notice one of the strategies, well, back in the challenge, at the very top of that, I think the number eight somewhere around there, is government. Government is an obstacle for the developers to come and build in our communities. And so what can we do to cut through some of that red tape so that it's more attractive to the developers to come to our region? And then again, one of the strategies was that housing TIF. And so groups in our regional group helped to author some of the contents of the bill that Senator Roth brought forth. And we frankly didn't think that it would get out of, even get out of the study committee. But I'll be darned if it got to a hearing, which Jeff and Ken went to today and voted out twelve to one, and it's going to the Senate floor. So this is a big deal. Because when we talk to realtors and developers, that housing sweet spot where the folks who wanted to buy, that was between the hundred and hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, infrastructure was a killer. By the time the developer put in the infrastructure, then put in the cost of building the house, there was no profit. So they don't build these kinds of houses. And that's the kind of house that we need for the employee to work in this area. So that is just one of the things that has come out of our committee. We'll develop a report that each community will take back to their individual governments to see if those are applicable in their particular instances. You'll notice also, one of the goals that we look at, agriculture is a big deal for all of our communities in this region. Henry County is a big agricultural economic development driver, just as it is for Wayne County, Rush County and Union County. We want to look at the agricultural industry as well as agriturism. Agriturism's a big deal now. And we want to get on that bandwagon. So I think that might be the next committee that I get assigned to. I think that's where we're going with this. But having said that, this is just one little small part that your community would be involved in if you were a part of our-
So this is going to help your organization apply for grants. When you show them you have this housing study, it's going to boost your scores tremendously when you go for a grant. Am I correct?
Potentially, but it's not directed as much at grants as, these are things that we need to do anyway. And one example would be Rushville has already embarked on some of this. They purchased fifty acres within the city limits and are working to put in infrastructure. Now, if you're successful with this TIF bill, that will be one avenue to help them pay back the infrastructure cost. And then our thinking is, a community could enter into a development agreement with a home developer that will say, we're going to provide these lots with this infrastructure at this cost per lot, and in return, you're going to build this kind of house and sell it at this cost. Because instead of having fifty thousand dollars in the lot infrastructure, you're only going to have twenty thousand dollars for that.
As I'd like to say, and Steph, as of you, I've served four years on City Council. Then I went to county four years and back to city for eight years as EIDD, and it went south. But I'm sad to say that the county didn't jump on board this. This is a great opportunity. You have six counties and we're the only county that's not. And it's just sad. And I know their finances is difficult, but they could have came up with the money, and Steph, it's just a-
Gentlemen, correct me if I'm not right on this, but with us having a comprehensive plan county-wide and city, that's a bonus for us, correct?
Absolutely, very much so. We have to have that to be able to apply for the stellers, number one.
In a new ordinance that was just passed, we're going to start up a land bank in Newcastle. And that's already passed. We have some things going for us.
Absolutely.
This is a very good program.
Those kind of things, we're not going to reinvent the wheel. We're someplace else. We're not stealing. It's just that simple. I noticed, one of the reasons why we invited the Henry County Plan Director, just the Saturday before we were going to have our committee meeting, I had noticed an article in the Times of where they were struggling with those very obstacles of getting housing development in Henry County. So it seemed very appropriate that they would gain a lot of input from our committee.
This is a very positive program.
I've got just a few clarifying questions, just from my own records and for the public to maybe clarify some things. Number one, I'm just curious, the regional stellar grant application, I believe, has got to be, I mean, theme is not the right word, but what was the application for last year?
There are, there are a couple of parts to that question.
And I'm asking, and let me frame why I'm asking it. I'm asking it because, you know, we've gone from, I mean, obviously you see a big movement in Rushville, and they are one of the last communities to individually obtain this grant. And so I'm curious, I think part of the challenge for some people is wrapping their minds around how it would work regionally.
And so the, I think the regional stellar is still a work in progress.
Right.
And so how it's going to end up may or may not be how it was interpreted in 2018. There was a requirement that we put together what they call a regional development plan that incorporated a series of projects that the region bought into. We put together a- We put together a, a strategy of, of a series of projects, and, and keep in mind the limitations. In order for a community to participate in regional stellar, they had to have a comprehensive plan that was no more than seven years old. That applies to a, a, a town, a city, or a county. So because many of the communities in our region have not been focused on that, they were not eligible to be a part of, or to, to put forward a particular plan, a particular project, to be a part of our regional development plan. So what we did, with an intention to, to work, move forward with this as a region, is that we established a series of projects, I think there were eight. Six of those were for individual communities that qualified because they had a comprehensive plan that, that met the criteria. Two of them were projects that were for the whole region. One of those was a workforce development project that, that the, our, our Work One region, our Work Force Development Region, Region Six, put together on our behalf. They were going to provide the, the training and the programming, and we would designate them as our grant recipient for the region. Another one was a, a health-related, or actually two projects that Purdue Extension developed for us. One is called Healthy Families. The other is, is Mental Health First Aid. Those are widely recognized programs with, where trainers have to be certified and meet certain requirements. We actually provided funding as a region for the Extension people from Purdue to get the training necessary to move forward with that. Even though we did not receive the Stellar designation, we have an agreement with, with Purdue Extension to put on that program in, in each of the five counties of our region for the benefit of all of our citizens. So we are able to, to build on the Stellar process, to actually put in place some of the programming that, that we identified as being important to the region. At the same time now, we have a regional development plan that still lists those projects that, that we think are of highest priority. It also lists a number of, of complementary projects that were put forward by communities that did not have qualifying plans, and so they weren't eligible to, to be a part of the application process. But moving forward now, we have this regional development plan that, that will allow them to apply for funding through OPRAM, through the regular grant cycle, and they'll receive bonus points in those, on those applications because they're part of our regional plan. So, and it's a long-winded way to answer the question.
So, I mean, it sounds like there's some projects that are region-oriented, but then even within that, there are some still individualistic projects.
Absolutely. And I think that's an important element of this, because even as, as Steve was talking about our, our housing initiatives, and he's working with a regional committee to make recommendations, ultimately, every city, town, or county will decide on each individual initiative, whether it's something that fits for you. If, if it doesn't, then just ignore it and, and move on.
It's a good thing.
We'll get to the next thing. But if it does, the region has helped develop that for you, and you won't have to reinvent the wheel. And in return, as Steve said, we'll steal stuff from you that's, that's working for you. In fact, we were just talking a week or so ago about how can we incorporate some kind of, whether we call it land banking program, or some kind of, of residential program where we can turn properties over to, to homeowners, people who are going to live in those houses, give them some incentive to, to rehab it, and get that property back up to where it can be, and improve the, the assessed value of the whole neighborhood. Because, you know, if there's one house in the middle of the block that is, is a blight problem, it drags down the whole neighborhood. And, and so we, we were just talking about that. So if you guys have a, have a great program, we're going to, we're going to try to steal it, whether you join or not. We'll steal it.
I, I think one of the things with me leaving the meeting, one, it is a very large group. I couldn't tell you how many was in there, but everyone, to me, seemed like, knew each other. There were conversations going about this, and that, and this, and that. Of course, one of the big things was broadband issue that day. Driving back to work after that meeting, my mind was going three hundred different directions, thinking about how it could benefit Henry County and the communities here in our county, not just Newcastle.
So that, for whatever reason, triggered something in my head. Again, EIDD, they had a staff of, I think at one point, six full-time people, most of whom were grant writers. That's not the approach we're taking. In the five or six years since EIDD expanded, most communities who are interested in pursuing grants have already hired people that, that do their grant writing, or they've got people on staff that do their grant writing. So we're not trying to break into that business. We want to be as supportive as possible. We, we might refer communities to private grant writers, but that's not what we're about. We do have white EIDD, we have a contract with NDOT to do some, some traffic counts and do some, some transportation planning. We're brand-new to that, just, just kind of scratching the surface of that. But we are not actively pursuing a grant writing strategy at this point.
They sent me at a good table, because I was sitting with two engineers that sponsored, so we got to talk about what you and I did in this case.
Right. The last question, I think this is just confusion among, you know, those with the deciding power is, I mean, obviously, ideally, we would join, well, the county would join at the beginning of the year. This current 2019, is that window of opportunity closed now? Can they, I mean, what, what are we looking at? Because I don't think that the conversation is gone. I hope not. So, but I want, I think we all should know what the length of the window of opportunity is, so that we can figure out how to proceed.
I think we're trying to be as flexible as we possibly can be, keeping in mind that a heck of a lot of work and sweat and tears and, and money has gone into this process.
Right.
The other five counties have been supporting this program now for, this is the fifth year, even though we only started as an organization officially in, in the summer of 2016. We actually received a grant that, from EDA, actually, the grant was received by ERPC, the Southeastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. They received a grant which, which our membership matched, and they helped us get started. We operated with them being our bookkeepers and, you know, all of that for, for two years. But in that time period, the membership was paying dues. So they started out matching the grant, then the first year of operation, it, it dues were twenty cents per resident. The second year was thirty cents per resident. The third year, it was forty cents per resident. And, and this year again, it's forty cents per resident. So, so there's, there's already been a huge investment, not just of, of money, but of time and energy and effort. Having said that, last year, we started having these conversations about this topic. At some point in the spring, the commissioners adopted a resolution to join, the council set aside money, and by the time all of that had taken place, we were roughly halfway through the year. And I just thought it made sense to start.
Right, definitely.
I thought we had an agreement that that's what we were going to do. Then there was a significant turnover on the county council, and we had found that we had not broadhead long sufficiently. Their first meeting, I think, was the meeting that-
That we had been to, yeah.
And, and so we really didn't appreciate that there was any, any potential roadblock until before that meeting. I think we're, we're, we're willing to be flexible. I think our position is that, you know, kind of the more the merrier, the more active members there are, the better it is for everybody, particularly in expanding to, to a county that has very similar challenges and potential with the other five. So I think we'll, we'll be happy to work with you and see how this thing turns out, whether it's next week, next month, next year. You know, people need to be on board with all their questions and answers. Because again, you know, until you're ready to make that commitment, if I go back to you get out of it with what you put into it, if you're not ready to put energy and effort into it, then you're not going to benefit from it.
I'm trying to cut you off, Cora, I'd like to hear from you. Before you say that, Jeff, is there any else, has any question?
I had a question. If the, I'm Darryl Radford, which I prefer to talk to. If the city decided to say, okay, the county's in a tough spot right now, we'll pay the entire eighteen thousand.
Just have the county write the check.
You know, would that, would that be?
I can't answer that question for you. That, that, there's nothing wrong with that from our perspective. We don't care who puts up the money, it's done different ways in each of the five counties. But, you know, I, that's something that-
Or if the ci, if the city went to the county and said, we think this is valuable, we'll pay it this year.
Well, that's a little far-fetched, let's, let's take long-term. I'm not going to situate the, we're not going to pay anything upfront.
It's easy for me to say, I know.
You can make scenarios as you like, but it's not my decision.
But the approval, the approval has to come from the county. Even if the city were to pay eighteen thousand, the county would have to make a, an action.
Would have to decide to join.
So some clarification. The commissioners remain on board. The commissioners took actions, sent a letter saying that we want to be a part of the organization. It was in the county budget. It remains in the county budget. It happens to be a line item with the county council specifically. And so they took a prerogative.
The county council controls all financing.
Sure, but they took a prerogative to-
Not join.
They're not releasing the money at present.
Not releasing the money. So on a vote of four to three.
Because they got to fix something at the jail?
Yeah, I don't know.
It's the interest.
Welcome to the crowd. Ours is five, David, it's okay, whatever.
Thank you for your interest in this topic. So regionalism has been a buzzword for as long as I've been in this business, but it's more than a buzzword. We live it every day. Just think of where you work, where you shop, where you go within the region. Think of when people are, are, are looking to move to an area. Think of it when businesses are looking to relocate or invest. Here in the room, we care about boundaries, municipal boundaries. You're elected, we vote on municipal boundaries, but we, we truly live in a region. And so context for regional collaboration is important. At, at, at the EDC, we're involved in a ten-county regional marketing partnership that encompasses nearly all of Jeff's counties, and some of the counties of the, the regional planning organizations to the north. I think it makes sense to be a part of a regional planning commission, where our values are aligned, and where there is authentic collaboration among elected officials. And that's what excites me the most about this opportunity. I'm, I'm on the record in support of this with the county. I appreciate the opportunity to, to come and, and speak to you at, at your invitation. City-county collaboration is important as well. So I, I, I don't want this, and I, and I don't think you're interested in this at all, but I'm just, I'm, I'm being very obvious here, not for you in the room. I don't want this to be a wedge issue between the city and county. The city and county collaboration is vitally, vitally important, but I do appreciate your interest, and I do appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate you guys coming.
I want to thank all three of you for coming.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
And Jerry for your, your life.
And on that collaboration, has anybody on this council talked to anybody on the county council about this topic?
Not this topic.
I mean, I would, here's the thing, and I'm not, I was going to make a motion tonight, and I don't think I'm going to do that because of what President Koger said, but the county council's next meeting is the twenty-eighth of this month, after that, it's the twenty-eighth of March. So any action that would be taken wouldn't be until after the first quarter, so we're already past that. So that's kind of frustrating, but have those conversations. I, I don't think that we can anticipate them coming to us, and that's not saying anything negative for them, but I think that, you know, if we are behind this idea, which I completely am, we need to take the initiative to push them and stretch them a little bit. So I'll just leave it at that.
Well, Your Honor, I'm with you, Jerry. Second.
Thank you, God. I appreciate it.